Yes, Mr. Chair. Mayor Dauntis, Mike Peterson, Bob Bollinger.
Here.
Adam Barley.
Here.
Maggie Harper, here. Alderman Klee.
Here.
Dan Hudson.
Here.
Scott Leclerc. Larry Hirsch. Cameron Green.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We have a quorum. Next, I'd like to move on to approval of minutes from the January 4th, 2024 Planning Board meeting. If any member has had a chance to review those minutes and would like to make a motion on acceptance or acceptance with amendment. Oh, Ms. Harper?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the January 4th, 2024 meeting as written.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor from Ms. Harper to approve the minutes of the January 4th meeting without amendment. Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Barley. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved unanimously.
Mr. Chair, I'm abstaining.
Oh, apologies. There was one abstention, Mr. Hudson. That was for the record, that was for the minutes of the regular meeting. Second, we would like to have a motion for the minutes of the January 4th, 2024 Planning Board's annual meeting. Has any member of the board had a chance to review those minutes separately and would like to make a motion on the minutes of the annual meeting?
So, so, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. There is a motion by Mr. Hirsch to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Green. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? One abstention by Mr. Hudson. That motion is approved. Next, I'd like to move on to communications. Do we have any communications from staff?
Mr. Chairman, fellow members of the Planning Board, your last communication was about a week ago when you emailed the link to the most updated packet.
Okay, very good. Next on the agenda, do we have a report from Chairman Committee Liaison? Ms. Harper?
I did have one thing. I just attended an NRPC discussion regarding updating New Hampshire's climate action plan. There might be some money available through federal funding, and so they're looking to various municipalities, towns, residents, looking for input on different changes that we could make here in New Hampshire as part of a plan. It was very interesting.
Are there any upcoming meetings on that specifically, or?
Yes, actually, if you go to the NRPC website, there's some online opportunities and then also some in-person opportunities in other towns.
All right, very good. Thank you, Ms. Harper.
You're welcome.
All right. Next item on the agenda, we're going to move into our normal business session, but before doing so, I'd like to go over the procedure of the Planning Board. Procedure of the meeting and hearing are as follows. After the legal notice of each conditional use or special use permit, site plan or subdivision plan is read by the chair, the Board will determine if the application is complete and ready for the Board to take jurisdiction. The public hearing will begin, at which time the applicant or representative will be given time to present an overview and description of their project. They'll speak to whether or not they agree with the stipulations recommended by staff, and the Board will have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. The chair will then ask for testimony from the audience, and the chair shall have the ability to limit the length of public testimony in the interest of time. First, anyone wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan may speak. Please come forward to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. This will be the time to express your concerns or ask questions that you may have regarding the plan. Next, testimony will come from anyone wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The Board may then ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant. The applicant will then be given a rebuttal period, at which time they shall respond to any concerns raised by prior public testimony. After this is completed, the public hearing will end, and the Board will begin the public meeting, at which time the Board will deliberate and vote upon application before us. We ask that all parties keep their remarks to the subject at hand and not to repeat what has already been said. In order to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented and considering all applicable approval criteria established in the Nashua Revised Ordinances, thank you for your interest and your courteous attention, and I would kindly request that anyone in the audience or on the Board please silence your phones if you could. Thank you. Starting with our rest of the agenda here, old business subdivision plans, I'm just gonna make a note here. If anyone was here listening on Zoom, cases 823066, 8230067, 8230068, and 8230069 have all been tabled to a date certain, February 5th, 2024, and will not be heard tonight. The next item on the, oh, I'm sorry, February 15th, pardon me, correction on the Table 2 date. The next item on the agenda would be case 823-0202. Has any member of the Board had a chance to review that application and determine whether or not it's ready for acceptance by the Board? Mr. Barley?
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that that application is complete and ready for the Board to accept jurisdiction.
Thank you, Mr. Barley. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? All right, we are ready to hear case 8230202. The applicant or their representatives, please come forward and identify yourself for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. For the record, my name is Chad Brannan, civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. Our offices are located at 206 Elm Street in Milford, New Hampshire, and I will be representing the John Flatley Company this evening. We are before you tonight seeking a site plan approval to construct a 48,000-square-foot flex space building within Gateway Hills. The site is part of the larger Gateway Hills development, which is formerly known as the Nashua Technology Park. Currently, Gateway Hills encompasses approximately 400 acres of land and consists of a mixed-use development with office, retail, hotel, residential uses, and research and development uses mixed throughout. Gateway Hills is currently serviced by one public road, being Tara Boulevard, and three private roads, Innovative Way, Research Drive, and Digital Drive. The project area that we're here before you tonight to discuss consists of tax map parcels A45, A47, A48, A92, and A986. These five parcels will be merged together as part of this project and will be combined into parcel A-45, and that combined parcel will consist of 110.56 acres of land. This development proposes, again, to build a 48,000-square-foot flex building with associated site improvements, as depicted on the plan set that we've submitted for this application. The development is situated just to the north of Tara Heights and north of Site C, as the Board may recall. Site C is another 48,000-square-foot flex space building that was approved back in The subject property, all five of these parcels, that is, is bordered by residential properties along Shakespeare, Lilly Roads, and Mansfield Roads to the west, vacant residential land to the north, the FE Everett Turnpike to the east, and Tara Heights and Site C to the south. The proposed building for this project will be single-story and will consist of up to 10 units. We say up to 10 units because it is a flex space building, so there could be, you know, a tenant that comes in and takes up additional space. So if there was 10 units, they would be 4,800 square feet each, and each unit would have a small office with a restroom and a large warehouse space situated in the back with an overhead bay door. The design of this site provides for parking along the front of the building where the office spaces would be situated, and there will be loading areas in the back of the building for each one of the units as well. Taking a look at the site plan, you'll notice that there are 83 parking spaces proposed along the front of this particular building. Forty-two of the spaces will be constructed and are situated along the front face of the building, and 41 of the spaces are designated as future and will be constructed as needed. This site does provide for 88 accessible parking spaces along the curb line along the front of the building as well. To the rear of the site, the layout provides for 30 truck parking and loading spaces adjacent to the building with 16 additional truck parking spaces along the western edge of the pavement to the back. This site has been designed to provide for all emergency access vehicles, as well as large design vehicles for this, you know, industrial application. Access to this site and the buildings will be provided through the extension of Innovative Way, similar to the design that we completed with Site C. Innovative Way will be extended further to the north into this Gateway Hills property, a distance of 1,210 feet. And then we're proposing to construct a loop road off of this Innovative Way extension, and that will be a 2,700 linear foot loop that will provide access to the site and will also provide access to any future buildings that may, you know, come before this Board down the road along, you know, this loop as well. This development will be serviced by municipal sewer, natural gas, Penn and Chuck water, and underground electric utilities, as well as phone and cable utilities. Other site improvements that are detailed within the plan set that we have before you this evening consist of walkways, landscaping, lighting, drainage, and utility infrastructure. The lighting plans for this site are designed to consist of a blend of pole-mounted lights and building-mounted lights. Now, the pole-mounted lights are generally situated along the front of the building in the parking areas, and then there's building-mounted lights along the rear where the overhead doors are and such. All of the lighting design for this proposal does meet the city design standards. The drainage design for this project will be accomplished through a combination of open swale and closed drainage systems along the proposed roadway extensions and along the perimeter of the proposed building and parking and access improvements. Those swales and closed drainage systems will convey the stormwater to three stormwater management areas. One of those areas is situated on the south portion of the Innovative Way extension. It's actually in the southwest portion. And then you'll notice at the end of the Innovative Way extension, we also have the stormwater basin there. The third basin is situated in the, kind of the southwestern corner of this site, and that'll collect the majority of the improvements around the building and the lower portion of the loop road that's connecting back to Innovative Way. The stormwater management design for this site has been done to meet and exceed the city standards, and this project will require an alteration of terrain permit through the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. This project will also require a state permit through the Department of Environmental Services for a sewer discharge connection, and as you maybe note, one of the engineering comments for this application does bring into question sewer capacity for one of the trunk lines that services this portion of the property. There is an additional sewer trunk line that we'll actually be utilizing for this site that goes under Innovative Way just south of Tara Heights Phase 2, and that trunk line does have adequate capacity, and we did submit a sewer capacity analysis a while back supporting that information. So we look forward to working through, you know, those engineering comments. We certainly don't see any issues with any of those, but I just wanted to touch base on that. We have reviewed the staff report for this evening's meeting, and we do not have any issues with any of the staff's recommendations. We have received, you know, all of the comments from the department, reviews, traffic, fire, engineering, as I just stated, and we do not have any issues with any of those comments So with that said, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to address the waivers that we have in our requesting with this application as well, or I can answer any questions that the Board may have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Brandon. I think the first two waivers, at least the first is fairly standard, and the second is certainly one that we've seen before, but I think a little bit of explanation on waiver number three might be in order, if you'd be able to elaborate a little bit on that.
Absolutely. Happy to. So the third waiver request that we have before you is one that, actually, was raised by staff not too long ago, and that's from Section 190-181, and it's, in particular, it's Parts A and B, and this section of the ordinance requires landscape buffers to zoning boundary lines. So what's unique about this property is it has internal zoning boundary lines. What I mean by that is along the western portion of this site, there's a 300-foot setback to the residential properties, and that's generally where the zone boundary is, and you can see that on the plan. As we get into the northwest kind of corner of this parcel, you'll see that the zone boundary deviates from that 300-foot setback and actually comes internal quite a bit onto the property. This development is proposing some parking inside that, or straddling that zoning line, and so technically, we're not meeting a buffering requirement to the zone boundary line. But what we are providing as part of this proposal is a 600-foot buffer to the adjacent residential properties to the west, and that's a 600-foot natural woodland buffer to the disturbance that we're proposing with this application. Now, within Section 190-181, the buffering requirements is 40 feet between a park industrial zone and a residential zone. So we're practically far exceeding, you know, this buffering requirement with this plan, and then if you look at the buffering from this building to the north, to the vacant residential properties that I believe are actually owned by the city, we're providing about 150 feet to that, and that's a zone boundary line in that location. And so when we reviewed this with staff, you know, the feeling was that this would be a good situation to request a waiver, and under Section 180, which deals with the applicability, it clearly states in there that the Planning Board does have the latitude to grant waivers for many of these landscaping and buffering standards. So we think that, you know, the requirement is 40 feet. It's very unique that it's internal. I mean, what you're trying to buffer typically is an adjacent use, and we're far exceeding the, you know, the goals and objectives of this ordinance with a 600-foot buffer, and then, and that's to the, you know, to the west, and then certainly 150-foot buffer to the north to those vacant properties. So I don't want to speak for staff, but it's my understanding that, you know, we felt that together that this was a reasonable request when you consider those factors, and there was real, we couldn't find a good rationale as to why that zone boundary protrudes so far in to the site. It seems as though it should have followed that 300-foot setback all the way to that boundary, you know, that the city-owned properties to the north. So due to those circumstances and kind of special conditions, we are requesting a waiver from Section 190-181A and B, which requires that 40-foot buffer between the PI and the R40 zoning districts.
Thank you, Mr. Brandon, for that explanation. Members of the Board, any additional questions? Alderman Klee?
Thank you, and maybe I'm just not getting it, so please bear with me. If you're giving 150 to the north and 600 feet to the west as a buffer, why do you need a 40-foot, and why do you need to have a, I mean, a waiver for the 40 feet if you're actually doing an excess of that? Maybe I just, I know you said something about internal versus external.
Right, and the reason why we need a waiver is because the buffer requirement is not to adjacent properties, it's between the zoning districts. And so the fact that that zoning district goes through the property, we, you know, the interpretation, and we actually met with staff and reviewed this, and I do think the way that this section is written, technically, it does say buffer between districts, it doesn't say buffer between uses, and so because of that, we have to request the waiver. Most landscape buffer standards that we see, you know, in most conditions are to adjacent uses, and so I think that's why practically it's hard to understand. I had those same questions for staff, and that's why we met with them.
Alderman Klee?
Thank you again. I appreciate your patience with me. So when I'm looking at this and I see way off into the, I guess that would be considered the north, and I'm always challenged when it comes to that, but if I looked at Shakespeare Road, or Lilly Road, or Maysfield, or Cameron Drive, they're going to all have that buffer of 600 feet or 150 feet, depending upon where they, where they're located, is that what you're saying?
Yes, so any of the residential properties to the west
Right.
would have that 600-foot buffer. The 150 feet is to the north.
To the north, above them?
Yeah.
So then I'll ask again, so looking at Cameron Drive or Maysfield, which look like they're the northwest corner, is that right? Am I doing this right? Okay, they will only have 150, or they will have 600?
No.
All the residents?
The closest residential property on Maysfield
Okay, yes.
to their back corner, so it's kind of that triangular back corner.
Right.
That closest rear corner to our disturbed area is 600 feet.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Other questions by the Board? Mr. Barley?
Thank you, and sorry to sort of continue on that. Could you just compare, the 600-foot is obviously more than what's required. What would be the minimum, do you know, off the top of your head? So how much are you exceeding, I guess, what is required in the ordinance in terms of the buffering?
Sure, so, yeah, 40 feet is the requirement, and we're providing 600, so we're, you know, that we're exceeding it by a significant amount. And there's actually deed restrictions. I mean, just to get into, you know, a little more detail, there was an agreement, you know, with Tom Flatley back when he owned this property to provide buffering to the residential properties, and there's setbacks and no disturbance areas and such, and so, you know, this will adhere, this proposal adheres to all of those agreements. We did share those restrictions with staff as well as part of the evaluation.
Other questions by the Board? Ms. Harper?
Just out of curiosity, is there any additional buffering plan for, you know, directly along, kind of where the highway is on that portion of the property?
Where the highway is, like along the Everett Turnpike?
Yeah, on that side of the property, where the Everett Turnpike kind of runs on that side.
So if you take a look at the Innovative Way extension, you know, there's one area along the, you know, kind of that west, excuse me, that eastern area where, you know, there could be a future building site, but we would be before the Board, you know, on a site plan review when and if, you know, somebody shows interest there. But outside of that, a good portion of that area on that eastern side is actually being used for stormwater management, and then there's some jurisdictional wetland areas there. So there's really probably only one potential pad site located on that FE Everett Turnpike site. Does that help?
It does, thank you.
Other questions by the Board? Alderman Klee?
Thank you. This has nothing to do with the buffer. You mentioned something earlier about the sewer, sewage and so on, and that, is it that you're going to have to create a larger pipe coming in? Is that what it was? I remembered you mentioned something at the very beginning of it, and I went looking through the documents to refresh my memory of it. I think it was before you were talking about the waivers, at the very beginning of your discussion.
Sure, no, that's a good question. So when we got involved in this project probably 12 years ago, this property as a whole, we started looking at, you know, sewer capacity, you know, what can, what kind of development could, you know, this property handle, and could the municipal sewer system handle? And what we found is there's two, there was one active trunk line when we initially got involved in this project, and that's actually the one that the engineering report references. It's down by Spitbrook Road and goes under, you know, the FE Everett Turnpike, you know, down in that general location. When we did Tara Heights Phase 2, we actually lined another trunk line that goes under the FE Everett Turnpike that existed, that, and that ties, it goes through Royal Crest on the other side of the FE Everett Turnpike, and that trunk line has, you know, plenty of capacity for, you know, certainly this proposal, and we outlined, you know, that there's ample capacity for future development in that particular one. I do not disagree with engineering's assessment of, you know, the trunk line down by Spitbrook Road. That's always, you know, been kind of close to capacity, and we have tied into that with a number of developments over time, you know, Tara Heights, or excuse me, Tara Commons ties into that. We did, you know, some restaurants that tied into that, the hotel and such. As you work your way further up in Innovative Way, and you get, it's just south of the Tara Heights entrance along Innovative Way, is where the, kind of on the low spot, is where the trunk, the second trunk line goes through. That's the trunk line that'll be utilized for this development, and that does have ample capacity.
Just quick.
Certainly, yes. Alderman Klee?
Thank you so much, and thank you for your patience with me. The only reason I ask these questions is because, obviously, it affects the city's capacity and so on, but I also don't want it to have a negative effect on any of the current residents that have been in there, for them to have problems, but this is going to be a separate trunk line, and it will not affect those neighborhoods, correct?
Yeah, and we have to work through, you know, sewer discharge permit with, you know, the wastewater department, Engineering Bureau here in the city to go through that, and we'll, I mean, this analysis was done in 2018, where we evaluated both of those lines. We provided this to the city at the time to review, and it allowed us to, you know, connect to the Tara Heights Phase 2. But similar to the engineering review, you know, other engineering reviews, those are items that we'll have to resolve with them as, you know, as long as the Board is comfortable with that condition of approval, which we certainly hope you will be.
Thank you.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes?
Yeah, I'm comfortable working through that.
Yeah, I'm comfortable working through that later. Sorry for any confusion. When you say you submitted sewer counts, you were referencing ones that you'd submitted under previous application, not this one?
Absolutely.
Okay. So that may be part of, been part of the confusion. It'd be nice for us to remember everything that's come forward for all time of this development, but we can't. So, yeah, but we're happy to work through that with you.
Any further questions from the board? Ms. Harper?
Just one more question, and this may be for staff, but forgive me if I, you know, because I don't know this, but for this type of project, is a traffic study not required?
Well, they've worked out traffic studies over time, and maybe Chad can get a little bit more into that, but...
If you don't mind, I'm just, you know, concerned about the continual development.
So we did submit, or I shouldn't say we, VHB submitted a traffic, kind of a reduced study for review to Mr. Husband. And basically what that showed is that this project, this building, this development will not trigger a larger study at this time. And Mr. Husband agreed with this assessment, and we've actually paid the traffic contribution, the voluntary contribution already for this project as a result of that back and forth and his request and such. So the city traffic engineer has signed off on the report that was prepared by VHB. And so that's, you know, that's why, you know, a larger study was not conducted for this particular application.
Okay, thank you. I didn't see a traffic report, so thank you for answering my question.
Mr. Barley?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And Ms. Harper, I think you raise a good point, and just to follow up on that, because there has been, you know, an extensive history here where I know we've had conversations over time on multiple occasions about traffic and ultimately, you know, what might tip the balance in terms of more significant traffic improvements. And a number of cases have come before us where we said, well, the impact is incremental, it's relatively small, but I think in part this is more a comment for the benefit of the applicant, which is, I feel at least that at some point we're going to have to sort of add up the impact of all the incremental changes over time. And so I guess just fair warning to the applicant, you know, there's going to come a time, I think even in an application where we might still say, well, that particular use is not, you know, a material, you know, impact on traffic that we're going to have to assess. And I think part of laying it to be, you know, Dan and others to, you know, sort of, you know, think through an analysis of what has been the impact over time and, you know, at what point does that last project sort of tip the balance?
Mr. Hudson, yes?
So, yeah, excellent concerns, and we share those as well. What, there was a casino use that when it was proposed, I don't know what the status of that currently is, I think we granted an extension, but that, that project was going to put up two grid smart cameras, one at Spit Brook Road and Terra Boulevard, the other, I think, at Terra Boulevard and Innovative Way. And that, those cameras enable us, they do the vehicle detection, but they also count vehicles on a continuous basis. There's been a lot of traffic studies over time and, you know, incremental increases, right? We're really looking to get to the point that we better understand what traffic actually is there. The casino use and those cameras haven't come forward to date, but we have, our Board of Public Works did approve using some quarter funds to put a camera in at Terra Boulevard and Spit Brook Road. That's going to happen in the very near future. I think the camera's already here, it just needs to be installed. So we'll be in a much better position for future proposals to be able to tell you, you know, where we're currently at, and then, of course, they're going to do a study, what the incremental increase would be, but we'll be in a much better position because we'll have actual data. We've suffered from, you know, we do counts a number of years ago, and then we incrementally adjust them, we recalculate, but things have changed with the pandemic and the new normal, you know, now. And so it's hard to rely on those necessarily. So we, so we are working on things, and we'll have more information in the future. This case here adds a small amount of traffic per the estimation, so we felt that more appropriate to take the contribution towards another camera or paying back this camera. And then we'll further assess each thing that comes forward in the future with better information.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Alderman Cleese?
Thank you, and not to belabor, and again, this may be for Mr. Hudson or staff. We talked about the incremental impact over time. So is it the last person that's down the pipeline that's going to get that big bill for having to pay for the changes? Or how does something like that work? And I know that they talked about potential more growth afterwards, so would it be that project or would it be another project that finally hits the wall? I guess I'm looking for that. Thank you.
Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, and that is something, like, we had talked to the owner about coming up with a master plan for the full buildout of the site, but we haven't, and at times, I think at one point we had a conceptual plan, but we really haven't been able to get to the point that we know what the full buildout is and we can kind of map that out. We have, they had prepared a concept or preliminary level design adding a second through lane eastbound. We're going to be paving that road this summer, so we're looking at possibly trying to put that in, you know, provide some additional capacity. We'll see if we can do that. But, yeah, I mean, it has been, I don't know, not death by a thousand cuts, but that's sort of a situation where we, and a lot of things we even approved that haven't come to fruition, so I'm just looking for, kind of better handle on exactly where we are today, and then we can better assess going forward. What's been done in the past has been done in the past. These traffic contributions do kind of allow people to incrementally contribute towards traffic, resolving traffic issues, gives the city some money to do things. But, yeah, ultimately, there's, you know, you reach a certain level and something more significant is required, so we're not there yet, but it is, it is something to think about and further consider. This loop road for this thing that's being developed here, you know, clearly it's being set up for additional future parcels, and so it gives me some pause, what else is coming? But at this point in time, we felt, given the level of traffic impact for this, the best thing was to just take the contribution on this one.
Thank you.
Any additional questions from the board? Okay, thank you. Seeing none at this time, thank you, Mr. Brandon. We're going to open this up for public comment. I'd like to ask if there's anyone in the audience speaking in opposition or concerned, please come up to the podium and identify yourself for the record.
Derek Tebow, Nine Emerson Road, Nashua, Alderman for that, this ward that this is going into. So opposition, I wouldn't say necessarily, but certainly lots of questions from my constituents, that certainly people on Shakespeare, Maze, Mayfield, no, Maze Field and Cameron and all those roads that kind of abut this. Lots of questions sent to me over the last couple of weeks. I'll tell you, first of all, I don't know if I'd rather be on this side of the microphone or that side. I'm already missing being on that side. But some questions. So Ms. Harper kind of took my thunder. I was hoping I was going to be able to address the traffic stuff, but traffic, I think we're missing something here. So I've lived in Ward Eight for 23 years. All that land from, has been developed over that time, most of it, outside of the Sheridan and a couple of office buildings that were there. And I know COVID's hit, and I know digital's moved on, and so there's been some different things that have gone back and forth there. But with the incremental building, it all stems to the master plan of Flatley. They own 400 acres. We've yet to see a master plan. I've been asking for two years. I know prior to me being here, Matt Sullivan, Tim Cummings, they've been asking for a master plan, and we never get one from Flatley. So they're allowed to build these small little things that don't add up to a lot of traffic at the time that they're building them, but when you try to find a parking space in Prest during the day, right, it's packed, tons of parking, tons of traffic going in and out of all those areas during the day, tons of developments with apartments. And, you know, one constituent wrote to me that there was some issues, and I sent it to Mr. Hudson, so I'm sure he's looking at it where there's, you know, maybe needs to be a stop sign because it is getting dangerous over there. And so I think we have to look at traffic, and, you know, yes, it doesn't warrant a traffic study because it's one sole little office building compared to, you know, building of something massive. So, yeah, so we're never going to have, need one, and when they do one, it doesn't show much. So you have to look at it holistically, the whole thing, and try to look at the last 20 years and see what kind of traffic has it brought to that area. And I think that's a problem for a lot of people that live in that ward. If you don't live in that ward, you probably don't care. You're probably not going to the hotel a whole lot unless it's a wedding. So, but for the people that live down there, they do care about that. It's not, you know, it's not just the people that have abut the property on that side, it's all the people that live on the apartments on Spit Brook Road. They have to come out of their apartments and drive out there, whether it's Brook Village, Bay Ridge, Woodlands, Oak Hill, all those places. You have the senior housing over there as well, and they leave those places as well. So it's all of that. So some of the questions I have that I would hope that can be answered when the applicant comes back up. Will there be blasting? Trash pickup, I'm assuming that's going to be private and not the city, but that's a question. One of the biggest concerns with the abutters is a future road connecting the developments, the regular residential, to this area. And Flatley has pretty much for the most part said they're not going to build that, but I think they would like that at some point. And that's one thing, outside of an emergency road where the fire need to get through and emergency vehicles need to get through, I hope there's no connection there because we don't want, you know, residential, non-residential connecting where people can just drive through our neighborhoods. I think that would be a major, major issue, so I'm hoping that we can get a confirmation still that that's not going to happen. You know, going back to the master plan and even traffic, right, they have 400 acres, they're going to want to put more stuff there. If you're a company and you own land, do you just want to pay taxes on empty land? No, of course you want to put more stuff there. So there's going to be more traffic, there's going to be more stuff there, there's going to be more infrastructure need. So, and without a master plan, we don't have what that stuff's going to be. So, you know, the question of, are you building anything, you know, near the highway? Yeah, maybe, we don't know yet. There's some issues there we can't build everywhere, but we may be able to build somewhere. You know, there was talk by a constituent, and I think there was talk years ago, but obviously you have to get the state involved, building an exit that goes right off of there, the opposite of maybe Exit Three or whatever that exit is there to go off to that side and connect right to that development and kind of take some of the traffic out of that residential area. Again, I don't think Flatley would want to put up the money for that, and I don't think the state would do it without some payment of some sort from somewhere. I'm certainly know the city doesn't have the money to help that. You know, people are concerned about the clear cutting, they're hoping that it's only going to be on the spot where the place is built, so I'm hoping we can get an answer to that. You know, obviously there's going to be some tree cutting in there, and so some of the concerns was, we're taking a lot of trees down, a lot of vegetation down, are we going to put some back up in places after the place is built so we don't have this, you know, hot area, this thermal area that makes, you know, we don't have that cooling that we have with trees and bushes and some of that stuff? So that's a question. You know, they call it heat island or thermal island. You know, they're concerned, and I'm concerned about going into the R40, and, you know, I do hear, well, we could build all the way up to, you know, whatever the buffer is, but we're not going to do that, but we are going to cut into the R40. So, you know, I never like when they say, well, I could do this, but we're only going to take a little bit of that. And so it doesn't make that right just because you could do that. I feel always like that's almost a threat in a way to our constituents, and I don't think that's a good thing. Lighting, they've talked about lighting. Will the lighting be high enough, light poles that, the people that live on those roads, will they be bothered by them? Or will there be enough brush to kind of cover that so they don't get those lights going into the neighborhoods? If someone asked if the building could be rotated, I think in that point, people have issues with maybe some of the trucks being on the other side, the noise of the trucks, if it really is a environment where there's a lot of loading, you know, the noise, the constant noise from that. You know, somebody asked me if it's going to be a research, because, you know, when it says research and development, people think it's research and development, when it could be other things that aren't necessarily research. Will it be wet research or dry research? That's one constituent was worried about that. Wildlife, you know, what will this do? I know, talking to Mr. Durfee, he said that the Conservation Commission does not need to be brought into this, there's no wetland issue, even though the soil currently right now, when they did a site walk, was wet due to the normal seasonal wetness, but what will this do to the wildlife? I know in my neighborhood, you know, 23 years ago, we would never see a bear or a bobcat or even a coyote, and now you see those things in the neighborhoods. You see a lot of wild turkey, something I never saw either. And so obviously they're getting pushed from somewhere. So what will this do to that kind of wildlife? Will it continue to push it out? Will it continue to, you know, wipe it out? I don't know. That's a question I can't answer, and I hope that we've looked at that a little bit. And at the end of the day, I get that it's Flatley's land and they want to make profit. They're not going to, you know, people propose, well, ask Mr. Flatley to put a park there. I get that they're not going to do that. I mean, it's, and I get it, if I was a businessman, I would do the same thing, I would want to do something to make money. But I also want them to be good stewards of the neighborhood, good stewards of the land, good stewards to the city of Nashua, right? Because obviously they're paying taxes on it. They don't want a land that just sits there and they have to pay taxes where they're not making money off of. So, but we want to be good neighbors, and we want them to be good neighbors to the people that are abutting. I hope that whatever gets done and if we can answer some of these questions and hopefully avoid some of the things that I'm talking about and some of the constituents may talk about tonight, I know we have some people on Zoom that are going to want to speak, and I hope we listen to them and hear their concerns. Some of them have been in this neighborhood much longer than me, and they understand the original agreement with Mr. Flatley, and they understand the buffer zones and all the different things, and I'm really looking forward to hearing them speak, and I hope you guys listen to them as well, and I hope we can get the questions answered. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. In the audience, is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition or with concern? Please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Elizabeth Japitis, Shakespeare Road, and my husband and I and family have lived there since the early 70s when Mr. Flatley Senior did not own that land. And he knew what he was getting into, and I must say, he did not willingly offer the buffer. That was hard fought on our part, and I don't know why you would be giving that away. I don't know why. Just a thought. It's not my battle really because I still have the buffer behind my house, but I just want you to realize that he knew what he was getting into when he bought that land. My question is, is there going to be blasting? And that wasn't answered. Could you ask that to be answered?
The applicant will have a chance to address any comments that were brought up, so.
Okay. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in opposition or with Please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Maybe it's my ears. My name is John Japitis. I live at 16 Shakespeare Road. And as my wife said, I think we've been a torn in the side of John Flatley and his company over the years, we've lived on Shakespeare Road since the early 70s. I won't get into horror stories, I'll raise a couple of issues. Before the housing was, you know, allowed to be built, it was not unusual for residents on Shakespeare Road to be able to see the northern lights. Today, because the development is there, and although there were stipulations relating to lighting, it's really created a different environment for us now. Instead of having a, you know, dim neighborhood where we could see things like the northern lights, that's no longer available to us. Now, I Now, I know development has to occur, but Flatley is also a master manipulator of having one parcel done here, another parcel done here. During the commentary, the engineer mentioned that there was a development that was approved in 2020. Now, we're looking at another development in 2023. And then are we going to see another development in 2025? Without any idea of what's going to be in these individual parcels. All we're given is how many square feet it might take up. But what would happen in 2025, where the parcel that was approved in 2020, and the two parcel that's being given to you tonight? Flatley says, oh, this is a hardship for me. I want to combine those two developments because I have this wonderful opportunity. So I just know that what's being said tonight may not be the long-term truth of what will happen to the remaining parcel of land. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in opposition or with Seeing none, Linda, would you be able to let me know if there's anyone on Zoom?
There are two people with their hands raised. Betty Lasky, I think, was first.
Okay. Ms. Lasky, you're, you're welcome to speak at this time, we see your hand raised.
The other person has to mute the mic.
Am I unmuted?
I think.
I'm muted.
Am I unmuted?
Yes.
Betty, Betty's unmuted.
We're, we're just having a little audio difficulty in the room. If we could ask everyone on Zoom to please mute their, their device if they're not presently speaking, and once you do that, I'll ask Ms. Lasky to, to rejoin, please.
You should be fine to talk.
You're saying something.
I think it's.
Okay? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Betty Lasky, and I am a director butter at 15 Mace Field Road. I also am a former chair of your board, and I appreciate and thank you all for your service. I'm at a little bit of a disadvantage at Zoom. I apologize, I have not seen the amended planning report, so some of my questions may be addressed, but I appreciate you letting me have my say. The abutters, we have been there and negotiated the agreement with Tom Flatley back in the 80s, so we are well aware of the history. My question, my main question is about the restaurant that you say you have proposed. Is that, as I understand it, the hours of operation, and, and again, I don't have an amended planning report, a war from early in the morning to 7:00 PM? Am I correct with that?
Sorry, Ms. Lasky, I, I, the plan we're looking at is not a restaurant.
Well, he, the, the applicant said that there would be a restaurant within the premises. And I am concerned whether that will be, if there is a restaurant and they do rent it to that, it's included in this plan, will it be, will the hours have to adhere to what is said, what I understand the hours are, to 7:00 PM? So if it's a, a small little restaurant that'll be servicing the people in the building, I don't consider that a problem.
No, just, just to confirm, there, there's no proposal, and the applicant is confirming that he, I don't know if, if you maybe missed her, something he said, but there's no proposal for a restaurant as part of this plan.
I could, I could have sworn I heard him say that there would be a restaurant in there. Okay. The other question was about the, the building or the edge of the parking lot in the R40? And, what was the question?
We want to move that out.
Yeah, is there any way that that particular part of the parking can be moved out of that R40? So it eliminates any question as to what that buffer zone is?
We'll, we'll have, we'll have the applicant address that.
Okay. And again, I spoke to the staff a couple weeks ago, and I want to thank them for listening to me and I think answering a lot of the questions. And at that time, he didn't even know about the buffer zone, so I appreciate taking all of that into consideration. And thank you for your time, and again, good luck.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Lasky. Linda, is there anyone else on Zoom?
There is, there's one other person, Al.
Okay. Al Lamontagne, you're, you're free to enter your testimony, if you'd just sent your name and, and record, or, excuse me, name and address for the record, please.
Thank you all very much. My name is Al Lamontagne, and I live at 116 Lilly Road. And I've got a few questions, I think Oliver and Tivo must have been looking at my notes. One of my questions was about the lighting, but I'd like to talk about the trucks first. What size trucks are going to be coming in and out, unloading and loading, and at what time of night? I, I would hate like heck to be trying to sleep at night, and there are trucks backing up with their, you know, with their loud beeping, you know, disturbing the peaks. I think most people on Lilly Road would probably be concerned about the same thing. Excuse me. And another question about the lighting, the, the, the lights on the poles in the parking lot. I think somebody did mention how, how, while we're concerned about the brightness of those lights. Will they be, will the light be able to kind of permeate through the trees, through the woods, going up towards Lilly Road and Shakespeare? And I think my final question is, the 600-foot buffer, does that start at the street at, at Lilly Road, or does it start at the back of the property at 116 Lilly Road, or any of the, any of the properties on Lilly Road? I think that's the extent of my questions. Again, I thank you all for, for providing this meeting tonight.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Lamontagne. Linda, we'll go one more time, anyone else on Zoom that you can see?
Yep, I have, I have a question, a comment. My name is Mark Rizzolo, and I live at 14 Shakespeare Road. I'm neighbors to Mr. and Mrs. Japitis, and my parents used to live at 14 Shakespeare Road, and they were actually part of the covenants agreed to with Mr. Thomas Flatley years ago. I'm sure that Japitis has concerns about quality of life, and it is at the point where we can't even see any stars at this point. And there's light pollution coming all the way from Lowe's and DW Highway, and obviously any further development in the land in question is going to add to that light pollution. So certainly a quality of life issue. And secondly, I have a, a game camera behind my house, and I can tell you that every night I see coyotes, bobcats, raccoons, rabbits, occasional deer and so on, and they're all going to be driven out. So that's another issue that I'd really like to be addressed some point. And probably the, the last observation is that you're talking about a 600-foot buffer zone, and I know that definitely behind my house, there's wetlands. And I suspect that they're a little bit further beyond that 600-foot buffer zone. And the question I have is, are there any plans to infringe on that area after this project is approved or disapproved?
Okay. We'll, we'll have the applicant address that. Thank you, thank you for your, your testimony.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that, and, and, and I, I, one more that just occurred to me, I know that Shelley Drive was a, a so-called paper road, and part of the covenants that were agreed to with Tom Flatley, where that, that road would never be continued. And I would also ask for some assurances as part of the survey.
All right. Thank you again for your testimony.
Okay, thank you.
Linda, we'll go.
Al Lamontagne has his hand raised again, I don't know if you want to take.
Oh, certainly. Mr. Lamontagne, we see your hand is still raised, did you have additional questions or input?
I'm, I'm with Al, my name is Kathy Schuler, and I live at 116 Lilly Road.
Okay.
Okay, so I just hanged on to what the gentleman mentioned earlier about the wetlands. As I look at the map, and it talks about the 600-foot buffer zone, which seems as though it's being given to us as a very, as a gift, I think it actually includes the wetlands. And to me, it looks like that's part of why it's given that way, but I might be, might be wrong, that's how I look at the map. So just to address that. The other concern I have in regard to wetlands is, I just know that in our neighborhood, and I've lived there now for 35 years, we get a lot of, especially with this last bit of rain, the drainage, you know, it's all on granite and rock, we all have some pumps. I, and my concern is, again, just with drainage and having more water issues in that area. So if that might be addressed. That's my questions. Thank you so much for having, again, this meeting, and I look forward to hearing the answers. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Linda, anyone else on Zoom?
I don't see anyone else with their hand raised.
Okay. That being the case, we'll switch gears here for a second. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this application? Is, is there, and you see none, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak in favor of this application?
There's one person with their hand raised, but I think it, they already spoke, I think it's Betty Lasky.
We do see one hand raised on Zoom. Right now, we're just calling for testimony, speaking in favor of this application. Is there anyone on Zoom that would, that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Seems like not. That being the case, I'd like to take this opportunity to turn things back to the applicant's representatives to respond. Mr. Brandon, I'm, I'm sure you were keeping notes as well, but in no particular order, there seem to be a lot of questions about the buffer, blasting, garbage, lighting, parking in the R40 zone, possible clear cutting or changes in vegetation, impacts to wetlands if any are present, trucks and hours of operation. I think those are kind of the more site plan specific ones. Some of the other general questions, I think, about the properties in general, future connection to the residential neighborhood, traffic relationship to the master plan, and quality of life. And if I missed any, my apologies, but again, I'm, I'm sure you were taking notes as well. You're, you're free to take those on in any order in which, in which you please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will do the best that I can, and please certainly let me know if I, if I miss anything. So just touch on things as I have them in, in my notes. You know, from a, a traffic standpoint, we, you know, we hire VHB and Jason Plour to prepare the traffic and work with the, you know, city's traffic engineer on, you know, projects and developments and submissions to make sure that we have addressed any concerns before we come before the board. And certainly, I do understand the, the comments that have been, concerns that are raised, but there, you know, there was traffic studies done for this project some time ago that included other developments that never, you know, went forward, such as there was a research and development phase over by the entrance to Tara Heights Phase 1. And that was always included in all of the traffic studies. And so that never got built, in fact, we tried to do a residential development in that location, we've considered it, nothing's gone forward there. So there's, there's always been kind of an offset of numbers in, in how that traffic study works. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I'm just explaining, explaining my experience and my understanding of, of the history here. But we, nonetheless, I, I think that everybody understands, you know, our, on our end as well, that, you know, we're close to needing to revisit that. But the reality with this application is, it's a 48,000-square-foot flex space building, and these, this type of a use is just not a large traffic generator, and so it falls within that, that, you know, that umbrella, I think, that we have already addressed with prior traffic studies. And I'm not speaking for the traffic engineer, the city's traffic engineer, but that's just my understanding. And I just want to, you know, say a few words in that, you know, in that direction because, you know, we're not trying to round any corners here, there's a process for us to get before this board, and it does consist of us working, you know, with the professionals at the city to make sure that we've addressed any concerns that they have. And from a traffic standpoint, clearly, you know, from Mr. Husband's letter, we have done that. But we are cautioned, we understand that, you know, with future applications, you know, we will, we will have to revisit that again. This plan, and I know there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, master plan and, and things of that nature, and, you know, we kind of looked at that with, with, we did look at that with this layout, this road layout, you know, what, what makes sense for future development up here? And we've created building, future building areas, but we don't know what the market's, you know, going to demand and what people are looking for. And so these, these flex buildings are, you know, offer a home for a variety of, of different businesses, and so it's what, you know, our client is comfortable building at this time. But certainly, this loop road creates opportunities, which are good opportunities, for maybe businesses to grow in the city or to relocate, you know, to the city. And that'll land us right back here talking about the, you know, these same topics again. And at that time, maybe we do have a traffic report based on what a, what a future user might be. But it, but we don't have any, you know, interest at this time to share. I haven't worked on a concept for a business on this site for a long time, and so this project is intended to entice, you know, that, that, that type of discussion for maybe a future applicant while, you know, providing additional flex space, which is a, is space that Mr. Flatley has been successful in, in, you know, leasing and rent, excuse me, renting on this site as well as many others. So just wanted to touch on that. In regards to any connection to the north, there are no plans at this time to connect to that northern subdivision. We do have gravel road that heads in that direction to provide access from a maintenance standpoint for the stormwater management area, but it terminates at that stormwater management basin. The fire department has not asked for an emergency connection to that northern section yet, but if they did, it would be gated, it, that just hasn't, you know, come up there. You know, there's been no discussion on our side with an interest in connecting, you know, to the residential area to the north. So that is not part of this plan or any future plans that, that I've taken part in, and I'm pretty much the lead engineer on this, on this project. So just sharing, you know, what I, what I know. From a, from a buffer standpoint, I think there's been a lot of confusion over buffers. We are maintaining all buffer requirements, exceeding all buffer requirements, to the neighboring residential area. This plan, Mansfield, for, for this proposal, Mansfield area is the closest area that we get to, and it's 600 feet. area is the closest area that we get to and it's 600 feet. 600 feet to the very back corner of the property. It's an additional two or 300 feet to the house, but that's on their property. We're not counting that area. As you turn the corner and come down Lilly and, and then Shakespeare, which gets closer, you know, certainly to the property, there is a large buffer there. We're not proposing any building in that area. So I'm talking about buffers to the closest portion of the residential properties. So 600 feet with, with this is the closest we get. If we took a measurement off the corner, you know, the closest corner of the development to Lilly Road, it would be closer to 800 feet, you know, in that direction. And, and some of the others are correct. There is a jurisdictional wetland between their property and the development that, that kind of parallels Shakespeare in the woods. It's, it's detailed on the plan. It goes behind the, you know, the water tower. And we are not proposing any infringement on any of the wetland buffers or the wetland, certainly with, you know, with this proposal. So there is a mature wooded buffer that's being provided. And I'm not here threatening anybody that we're going to take the buffer or we're doing this or we're doing that. These are facts. These are dimensional components of this plan that are being, you know, maintained and provided. We are adhering to the agreement that two parties agreed to, many parties on one side, Mr. Flatley's father on the other at the time, and now certainly Mr. John Flatley owns the property. So it went from Tom to John, and now he's adhering to this agreement. We're not asking for any relief on the agreement. I think there's some confusion on that. We're not extending into an R40 zone that is defined in an agreement. I personally, and I think staff at one time, you know, we kind of agreed at a table that it doesn't make sense that this zone protrudes so far into the site. And so there's an R40 zone that comes way into the property. We're still providing 600 feet of a woodland buffer. 40 feet is what's required between the zone lines. And so if that zone boundary followed the residential, you know, property, then we would need to be 40 feet away with a park industrial use. This is a significant buffer, far in excess of what that, you know, typically would be. And this is a unique situation where I think, you know, the map and the regulations are just, they're not concise and they're not consistent, frankly, because there's other regulations in your zoning that says if more than 50% of your land area is in a particular zone, you can do, you can, you can do uses on that entire property. And so it kind of negates the, in my opinion, in, in one area of your zoning, it says, well, you don't need the buffer because you're allowed to extend that use into the adjacent use. This zone, this, you know, the 190, 181 is very conflicting and confusing, and that's why we're requesting a waiver. It's, it's not because we're actually looking for a dimensional relief that's going to have an impact on anybody. We're providing a dimension that's going to provide far in excess of what would typically be required. This is just a unique situation. And I, I know it's confusing and I'm sorry and I've, I've tried my best so hopefully, you know, people understand, understand that. But I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. As it relates to lighting, we meet all of the lighting requirements. There's no light pollution. The point-by-point is on there. The, it shows that there's no light pollution. And it does not take into account the fact that we have a 600-foot buffer. So that's going to provide even more, you know, I guess you could say buffer, you know, to any neighboring use. It's completely downcast lighting, full cutoff, night sky compliant. And so it's, it follows all of the regulations. And if it didn't, we would have, you know, staff stating such and we would need to request a waiver. And that's, I understand the concerns, but it's, it's, it should not be a problem from, you know, this site as designed. From a wildlife standpoint, there technically are no city regulations relative to wildlife, but what I can say is this project triggers an alteration of train permit. And as part of that permit, the New Hampshire Fish and Game does review the project and, and does comment on, you know, wildlife. And I can tell you, there's no threatened or endangered species hits or anything like that in, in locusts to this site. Those are recorded on the New Hampshire Heritage Bureau database or data check. And that, you know, did not come back with any, any hits, but we do go through that review. And we are providing a very wide buffer. And yes, maybe we're not providing it. It's an agreement. We're following the agreement. There's going to be a very wide woodland buffer between, you know, these adjacent uses. And that will be, you know, a wildlife refuge area if needed. The, touching on some of the other comments, I just want to correct some dates. There was, you know, a gentleman who got up and was, was stating that, you know, we got an approval in 2020. We haven't built it yet. We're, you know, we're, you know, moving pieces around and such. That's just absolutely not the case. We secured an approval, just like we're trying to do this evening before this board, back in 2022. Unfortunately, the way the state permitting works and, and such, it takes about a year to work through, you know, the state permits. We have secured all of the permits for that flex building that we did in 2022. I believe we finalized everything with that application, and it is shovel-ready at this point. Our client is securing bids for that project and he does plan on building it. But there's a process, and that's going through a process. And we're, you know, we're starting a parallel process with this. But it doesn't mean that, you know, we're doing anything, you know, shifty. We're showing everything on this plan and we're talking about all the things that we're proposing. And we're, we're here to answer questions and concerns and to, you know, try to eliminate any confusion. The, as it relates to, let's see here, you know, I missed a few. So the truck sizes, the trucks will be, this site's been designed for tractor-trailer truck to, you know, deliver goods. There's loading areas in the back. Tractor-trailer trucks will, you know, the area behind the building's been designed for them to back into loading bays and such to, you know, to offload product and, and, or load product and such. So, you know, certainly this is designed for, you know, those vehicles. And so I would expect that, that they're going to frequent, you know, the site. The wetlands, we are not proposing any wetland impacts with this project. We've laid the roadway out. We've laid all of the improvements out to avoid wetland impacts. And so we're, you know, we've, we've tried to be sensitive to that. And from a drainage and a, you know, a wet, a foundation, there was some, some lady raised a concern relative to foundations and such. I mean, we mitigate for surface runoff. We do not mitigate, you know, groundwater that existing conditions that are currently there. There are jurisdictional wetlands and areas, but what we do is we capture, we collect, we treat, and we meter. So it's qualitative and quantitative mitigation. We treat the runoff. We meet city and state standards, and then we mitigate the runoff. We, we meter the flow of runoff from the site so that it matches existing conditions during those design storms. As it relates to blasting, we have performed, I believe, 20 to 24 test pits throughout the site in, in various locations. And the test pits results were actually quite favorable out here. We do have a high seasonal, high water table in areas, but we did not encounter ledge, you know, in a lot of those test pits. With that said, we can't possibly test every, you know, inch of this site. And I'm sure that we're going to run into something with, you know, utility runs, sewer water extensions where we're, you know, we're deeper into the ground. But there's a process for that that, that will be followed, just like with any other project. But this is not, you know, we're not anticipating a large blasting, you know, requirement for this development based on, you know, the test pits that, you know, that we've done. But I can't say that there will be none. It's just not, it's not possible for me to, to state that. And I, and I, I wish I could, but I, I can't. As it relates to noise, there's actually a, you know, a note that we agreed to on, I believe it's on the site plan, that talks about, you know, mechanical, you know, there's, there's decibel levels that can exceed between certain hours. And, you know, that's on the plan. We're, you know, we're agreeing to those. And I think that was a recommendation with the prior application, you know, from staff. And we've just carried that on. We kind of anticipate. And what it, what it talks about is if you're adjacent to a residential use, making sure that, you know, you, you're not exceeding this decibel level for, you know, this, these, these hours. So that's, that is on the plan and is part of the proposal. Mr. Chairman, I think that was all of them. We are not, I guess, just to clarify, we are not proposing a restaurant in this location. I think unfortunately, in my initial presentation, I stated that within Gateway Hills, which is the entire 400 acres, there are restaurants. But it's not part of what we're proposing this evening. I think that's where the confusion might have been. So I just want to clarify that for the record.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brandon. I, I had two, two quick follow-ups for you. Garbage disposal, is, is that anticipated to be private or public?
I think it's, I believe it's private because they're private roads. I think that's the way the, the city handles it. Now, these are private roads with the, with the, there's an easement for the public to pass over them. But I think it's private for this site.
Okay. And the, the only other one I had on my list, have hours of operation been determined yet for the flex space?
We have not determined the hours of operations yet. I mean, we don't have users lined up. And so typically, you know, we address that on a, you know, a staff level typically with these types of project footnotes.
Maybe I'll just throw that back to staff really quick. Based on zoning, are there any restrictions to hours of operations that, that you're aware of?
That should be on the plan, hours of operation, if they, you know, general, general statement.
Thank you. Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just, I, I was looking through the notes on the plan. Note 31 on the plan on the first sheet.
Perfect.
List hours of operation. I talked about a restaurant as well, though, but I guess that's per city ordinance. So, so the, the resident's concern about trucks backing up at night shouldn't, shouldn't occur. It does, it does say that shipping-receiving refuges, pickup, other operations need to be limited to those hours that are specified, which are 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM Monday through Friday and 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Saturday.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Any other questions from the board? Alderman Cleat?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you again for, I have a, a number of questions. You have answered some of them, so I can scratch off the blasting because you've already talked about that one and the wetlands. You did answer that one. I, I guess I'm going to ask the question about the, the covenants that has been spoken about, that agreement that has been made with the neighbors and so on. I always have concerns when I hear covenances and agreements because I live in a community where there was a covenants amongst the, the neighbors. And then when people moved and things got changed, like for instance, one of the, the, the items of the covenants was that there would be no livestock. And then the city put in the chicken ordinance and people are going to do that. And it's, when it was brought up, it was like, well, that's a civil suit. You're going to have to sue each other. In the case of this, Flatley is a very large company. And if they decided to go against this quote-unquote covenants, all those neighbors would have to try to dig down into their pockets. I don't want to put you on the spot because you're not the owner of record, but you are talking about the 600-foot buffer, which I, I really appreciate and so on. I just would like to hear if there is any representation from the owner that, that covenants would keep in place as time goes on, just for the public record and so on. Having said that, I know that's not something you can say, but I do want to put that out there. Somebody also mentioned something about turning the building around so that all that truck noises and the, the up and down of that, I know that would really kind of change your plans and put it, but as the architect, can you just address why that would not be possible?
Sure. Well, it actually wouldn't be possible in part because of the covenant. There's an 800-foot restriction on placing buildings. And so the building, we can't take the site and flip it around because the building can't get any closer to, you know, the, or it, it wouldn't work with that configuration. And so that's why, you know, we're not looking to do that. And then certainly from a presentation standpoint, you know, anybody that drives innovative way in this Loop Road, it'll have a very professional, you know, appearance from, you know, from the road. And that's more welcoming and more marketable for, you know, businesses that decide to, to occupy the site. And so it's a, it's a little bit of a balance, right, where we are adhering to all of the setbacks. And, and what I will say to answer your prior concern about the owners looking to make a public statement, I mean, they've submitted this restriction to staff as part of this review process for public record and have agreed, I think, you know, although they're not here tonight, to agree, we have agreed through the, the execution of this design. You can see the setbacks are, many of them are clearly labeled on the plans. There is an intent to carry forward with all of those requirements and to, you know, to, you know, to work with, within the, you know, that agreement. There's a number of restrictions and covenants, you know, numbers of stories, maximum building height, distance to buildings, you know, distance from the, you know, neighboring site to any disturbance. And there's a, there's a number of details in this plan exceeds, meets and exceeds all of the requirements. And so I think if I can stand here as a, you know, a professional that's reviewed this covenant and state that this proposal meets and exceeds that. Now, we'll be here hopefully with other plans in the future. And we'll be talking about a lot of these same details and we can, we can address all of those same concerns at that time with different, you know, expansions or, or developments.
Thank you. May I continue?
Certainly. Alderman Cleat?
Thank you. I do have a few other questions. I, I'm glad that you, you mentioned about coming back and, and so on. I, I call that the nibbling factor, meaning that you have more, not just with this building, but you're going to have more build. And as Alderman Tebow very wisely pointed out, this is your property and you're going to have to develop it to the best way that you can make money. And we understand that. But one of the things you had said was at one point you had talked about potentially residential. And you said you looked at it as a possibility. I assumed that the numbers didn't work out. But you, when I, when I look at all this and I look at, it was talked about master planning. You said you looked at the master plan and so on. My concern is, and I'm going to state this straight up, clearcutting. How many acres are going to be clear cut for this project and for future project? Will you, will all clear cutting go all the way up to the, because I look at it and that's quite a forest and quite a, and I'm always very concerned about trees coming down when they don't need to be. Someone mentioned, will you be putting some trees back in and so on? I know that's a lot to unpack, but would you mind?
Sure. And I think that, you know, unfortunately, all we can really talk about is the development that we know about. And that's what we're here tonight presenting. You know, You know, I don't know who the next user is going to be. I don't know what size business they have, what the requirements are going to be for parking, loading, you know, and, and things of that nature. But what I do know is we will be, we will be presenting those details once we know them and we have to meet, you know, we either have to meet your ordinance and your requirements or we have to go through the appropriate channels to seek relief. And so we plan on doing that. I hope there's more, you know, development on this property over time, but I don't know what it's going, you know, to be. So I appreciate your concern relative to impact. We show limited clearing lines and, and all of those details within this plan set for, you know, this particular development. You know, this certainly triggers alteration of terrain permitting. Any project that we go forward with is going to trigger the same. We're going to have to go through, you know, that extensive review process as well as, you know, the local review. And that does take into account, you know, land alteration, obviously, you know, different land, land coverages, stormwater mitigation. And stormwater mitigation, you know, sometimes you trigger different features based on, you know, the amount of, of, of land area that you're, you're impacting and what you're mitigating. And so I don't, I can't speak to those details, but I don't want to discount your comment because we will have to address that over time.
I, I have other questions, but I want to give other people a chance, so thank you.
Certainly. Is there anyone else on the board with questions at this time? Ms. Harper?
Just, I, I just wanted to say, when you're talking about business hours at this particular facility, you know, sometimes I think about, you know, trucks arriving on site early and idling for many hours before business is open. I mean, I, I don't know if the applicant would be amicable to, you know, having signage that we're not allowing idling or overnight parking, but that would be appreciated.
Okay. It, it does say another truck-related activity shall occur within the hours of operation.
It does. Oh, I'm sorry. I don't remember how my glasses today, so I can't even read it.
I could bear, I couldn't find this note, so I appreciate Mr. Hudson finding it for me.
Thank you.
Same thing, glasses. I missed the, the plan being right here.
I know. I do too. But thank you, I appreciate that.
No problem.
Any other members of the board? Alderman Cleese, certainly.
Thank you. Hopefully this will be my last question. One of the, one of the speakers brought up a question about like drainage and flooding and, and all of that. And I know there's the, so, or do you have any concerns? And I know you have to meet other, like EPA and so on requirements, cities' requirements. Is there any danger to the residents getting any kind of, when we do clearcutting and we do, as you said, change in terrain, are there any concerns that this could happen?
There's not any concerns relative to, you know, certain, I mean, certainly where the residents are located, because there's, there's a wetland area between us and their up, their upslope of, of the, you know, development and, and other areas. We're capturing all of the approved areas through the conveyance wells and, and the closed drainage system. So we're, we're taking all of the stormwater runoff from this development and routing it to those stormwater management areas. And, and that's where, you know, we're doing the qualitative and quantitative mitigation. And so we have to meet, you know, those design standards. And so I do not have any concerns relative to, you know, flooding and, and things like that.
Thank you for taking all my questions.
I'll give the board one more chance. Seeing no hands. Mr. Brandon, thank you. At this point, I'd like to conclude the public hearing on this application. And the board will now go into our deliberations. Lots to digest here, a lot of back and forth and, and a lot of good questions. Don't know if anyone has any, any discussion items they wanted to flush out amongst the board first. Mr. Barley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I would just, you know, say two things. I mean, I, I think, or maybe broadly speaking, you know, most of the concerns that are, have been expressed by Butters really relate to, I think, the sort of continued development of this parcel and some of the sort of the incremental changes that we've talked about. I think we've, we've covered traffic already and, and I, I agree with Mr. Hudson that, you know, this is not the, the particular application to, you know, address sort of larger off-site issues, but something that certainly we should continue to look at. And otherwise, I mean, I, I can certainly appreciate from the perspective of the surrounding, you know, residential neighbors that, you know, that they're, they're preference privately, no development at all. But I, I think, you know, given the reality of the continued development of the site, I think the, the type of proposal that the applicant's come before us with tonight is relatively low impact on those surrounding residences. You know, particularly when you consider, you know, some of the other opportunities that they could have considered for this particular site. And, you know, we've talked a lot about buffering. And again, I'm, I'm sure, you know, the residential surrounding residences would prefer, you know, more buffering always, but I, I think, you know, given the, given the layout, given the nature of the site, you know, I think the applicant's done a pretty good job of, of providing fairly substantial buffering and, you know, trying to account for some of the concerns that neighbors have. So I think all in all, you know, it's, it's a relatively low-impact use. It, it, you know, does not have the kind of implications for the neighbors that, you know, a number of other uses could have. And I think the applicant's tried to do a good job in terms of, you know, mitigating their impact. So with, with all that said, I, I think it's a, I think it's a good proposal within the context of the site.
I, I, to Mr. Barley's points, I, I think the applicant did a very good job of explaining the site-specific elements to this application tonight, to some of the bigger points with regard to future development. I think it's obviously on, on the city's radar. It was not that long ago, I believe jointly, Mr. Hudson, Mr. Sullivan, and at the time it would have been Mr. Cummings and his former position jointly signed a letter basically kind of urging for that, that master plan scenario. I, I have to imagine at, at some point, I'd like to see that come together. But I feel very confident that this is certainly on the radar of, of senior-level staff within the city. And, and I think that they're certainly going to keep the citizens in, in mind when future development comes down the road here. So that's, that's kind of my general thoughts. Obviously, I'm, I'm welcoming other opinions from other board members. Alderman Cleese, please.
Thank you once again. There's no doubt that there's going to be continued development. And I know I'm just kind of beating a dead horse and echoing what you've already said. I really do hope that the city staff and so on does work a little bit harder and that I, I know that no one can know what they will or won't be able to develop whatever the, the market will bear at the time. Personally, I'd like to see residential, maybe the neighbors might not. But the thing is, I, I think for the city to be able to do more with the roads and so on, I, I think it truly is, we can't force it, but I do think it's important for them to do a master plan. And if they can't and they don't, I think it's going to be incumbent upon this board to look at what they've done and what they're proposing to do in the future and make decisions based on that, not necessarily just on that one little thing that they've come to. I, I think that's really something that's important. I always have issues on any kind of potential taking down of trees and forests. I mentioned that I, I hate to see a tree come down, not a tree hugger, but, and I know we have to build. But anytime we cut down trees, we do create a lesser dense. And it's not necessarily that they still have the 600-foot buffer. It's going to be the quality of the trees within that buffer because they've been kind of in the center. So you'll probably find that there is less foliage on those trees and so on. So we, we can't, while I do believe they've answered all the questions, they've done everything that they've needed to do, we do have to understand that when they get up to that point where there's only 600-foot buffer, the outside trees will no longer have the thicker foliage because they've been inside. They've been deprived of, of light and so on, so they're going to be thinner. It's just kind of the way life goes. And, and as having seen it personally within Greeley Park, I can tell you that is something that is, is going to happen. Just keeping that in mind, but I do appreciate that, that has been, they've come and they've, they've addressed those types of things. And one other note, they talked about the land use codes and zoning and all this. The nice thing is Mr. Durfee and staff are working on revamping those and so on. So maybe those are some of the ones that can be issued. So I do appreciate them bringing that up. And I also appreciate everybody's time of letting me jabber on here and, Mr., for allowing me to use your microphone. So thank you. Mine was dead, I wonder why.
Thank you, Alderman Cleese. Comments from, from any other board members? Seeing none. Would someone consider making a motion on this application? Mr. Barley?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I would make a motion to approve new business A23-0202 site plan, John J. Flatley Company owner. And that would be with a finding that the application does meet the requirements outlined in NRO Section 190-146D. And that approval will be with a total of 17 stipulations. The first three of those are waiver requests. Number one being a request for a waiver of Section 190-279 EE requiring all features be shown on adjacent parcels, and that will read is granted and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number two being a waiver request from Section 190-282A requiring drafting standards to be no smaller than 50 feet to one inch, that will read is granted, and finding that the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Item number three being a request for a waiver of Section 190-181A and B, which requires a vegetated 40-foot buffer between the PI and R40 zones, and that will read is granted, finding that the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And then stipulations four through 17, reading is written in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Barley. There's a motion on the table. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Obstention? Motion passes. Thank you. Before we take the next case, I'd like to call a five-minute recess if we could. So we're, we're adjourned for about five minutes. Thank you.
Again.
Someone mind giving a knock?
That's why I asked that question.
All right. Planning Board is back in session, 8:50, January 18th, 2024. Next item on the agenda, we're going to move to new business conditional use permits, case A-23-0216. As any member of the board had an opportunity to review that application and would like to make a motion as to whether the board should accept jurisdiction. Mr. Hirsch?
Move to accept jurisdiction.
All right. There's a motion by Mr. Hirsch to accept jurisdiction of case A-23-0216. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Hudson. Any further discussion? Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'm going to recuse myself from this conversation.
Certainly.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman Cle. Any, any additional discussion? No, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jurisdiction accepted. Attorney Pearlman, please proceed. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Andy Pearlman, attorney with Proneer and Pearlman here at Nashua. I promise you, this case will not take as long as the last one. I was here about a year ago where this board was gracious enough to grant a conditional use permit for vaporama of Nashua, our client, at fourteen B Railroad Square, and we're seeking a one-year extension of that conditional use permit. We have no changes to what we had approved last time, same plan, same retail shop, and no, no changes to the exterior, and we're just seeking the one-year extension of the conditional use permit. And the delay in getting this project off the ground is that we have discovered some off-site stormwater issues that have, that are being addressed with planning through the Keach Nordstrom Engineering Office, and our contractor is working with staff now to get the permits in place, and he's, he's aiming to address those stormwater, off-site stormwater issues come April 1st, and then once those are addressed, my client can finish the renovations to the site and is, is hoping for, hoping for a summer opening this year. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we're just seeking the one-year extension and be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions from the board at this time? Mr. Barley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a, a quick question, because obviously the, you know, the context of the original approval of the, of the conditional use, you know, the background there, obviously we had sort of a unique scenario in terms of the communications, the lack thereof, and you know, with the city and, and I think sort of a, a little bit of a detrimental reliance situation where you have the applicant that invested a lot of funds. Just, I just want to understand, this is, you know, obviously you're saying there's a delay, there's still expectation, you know, this is going to be forward and hopefully this summer, but you, you know, just want to have you confirm, you know, nothing has changed in terms of, you know, the applicant's position is still, yeah, they, they've made this investment in this site and that, you know, that continues to be, you know, investment they couldn't apply elsewhere. So in other words, it's not, it's not like they're, they've, you know, abandoned this site in the meantime and, and have recovered the cost or anything of that.
Not at all. And, and I have to give credit to the property owner, J.L. Sweeney, the company is, Alans is the property owner, but they've been very good with my client, very gracious with respect to the rent, and so, no, my client is going forward and is, he's already bought all the case, all the interior stuff, all the cases and cash registers, all the kind of the mechanics of a retail shop. So no, he fully is a full, full, full on ahead.
Yep, thank you.
All right. Any questions, other board members? Ms. Harper, please.
So initially, a year ago when you came, there had already been a huge investment in cases and cash registers and all of that, so I guess I'm just trying to understand the timeline of when, from that point, this, you know, engineering issue appeared and why it's taken so long.
That, that's a fair question. So what happened was, so my, my client, Hitesh Punjabi is his name, he is doing a full interior renovation of what was Portland Pie, and part of that, he's, he's taking, he's replacing all the flooring in the, within the building, and as he's doing that, and this was now, where are we, I don't know, maybe last spring, as he's pulling up the flooring, he sees that every time it rains, the basement fills with water. So that's, that's unusual, and the moisture and dampness and water is not good with the products that he's selling, the vape products that he's selling, so does that have to be addressed? So that, to solve that problem, has taken some time to bring an engineer to diagnose the problem, to figure out what was happening. And frankly, what was happening, the city's stormwater drainage system in this part of Railroad Square outlets directly into the basement of fourteen B Railroad Square, right? Kind of unusual, very old building, pipes may have broken over the years. So in order to address that, it took the Keach Nordstrom office some time to figure out what was going on and come up with a plan, get that plan before Mr. Hudson's office, get that plan approved, and now the contractor is taking the next step to line up his permits, and now we're in wintertime, we're not going to open up the street come winter, but come April 1st, that's, that's what we hope to get the, and it's like a two-week job, and it involves installing some stormwater drains, but then, once that's done, then DJ, Hitesh, can finish out the interior renovation work.
Thank you.
And Mr. Hudson, we've been working with Mr. Hudson's office on this issue.
Mr. Hudson, please.
Yeah, thank you. I can affirm that the applicant's been working with engineering. The drainage issue is one that dates back to, we believe, back to when the, the railroad was steam-powered, and they were actually capturing the water to use for that purpose, that's what we believe to be true anyway. This building was a railroad facility. But anyway, it's a, it's a clearly problematic situation. The applicant, and we raised it at the time of the application, made the, made the applicant aware of the issue, because we were aware of it from previous history, but the applicant has contracted an engineer, I'm sure they spent additional money for the engineering to advance a design to remedy the situation, so it will be a win-win. They'll, they'll address the drainage impact on their business, but also provide some new drainage infrastructure so that the, the drainage from the street can be properly routed without going through a building, so. And that, that does take time, they submit a plan, as we review it and that, and obviously we don't want to be constructing that this type of year, so. I'm sure that has delayed their project a little bit, and, but we do have a good plan going forward and look forward to that being implemented.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Other questions from the board at this time? Seeing none, I'm going to open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition or with concern for this application? Please come up, most importantly, state your name and address for the, I'm just joking, we, we all know you, but for further record, please, thank you.
For the record, Alderman Patricia Cle, and I live at Nine Maywood Drive in Nashua. I, I, I wanted, I, I am truly opposed of this particular building, not building, but business and so on being there. We all know that when I came before you first time, I had put through a, an ordinance that did not allow for this type of a business to be as close to another business, and within that area, there are multiple businesses within the thousand feet, there are schools and so on. That is kind of a moot point at this point, because you've already approved it and so on. My, my concern here is, and I'm glad that Mr. Hudson, Engineer Hudson, had made the fact that this might be a win-win to reroute these pipes. I assume it's a win-win for the, the building owner, and, and they are, of course, paying for it. My question is about, somebody mentioned something about opening the street, so I'm a little worried about that, but also another question, and maybe I misheard, Engineer Hudson, when he said that they were made aware of this at the time of the application. So I just, if I, if I misheard that, I would like, like to, to know that. But if they were made aware of this at the time of the application, why did it take so long just because they did that? To be honest with you, I knew there was flooding down in that basement. I've been to Portland Pie many times, and they all talked about the flooding that was in, within that basement, so this shouldn't have been too much of a surprise. But again, I am, I'm just opposed to this building, I mean, this business in general. It goes against what the city was trying to do in not having so many there, and being the alderman of that particular ward, I, I think it hurts. It hurts the business. I understand that they feel that they're going to be an upper high class, but we've already got one, two within across the street and one right around the corner, so this is not the type of business that we need to have so many so close. I don't think that's going to change your mind, because you've already approved it based on those facts, but I did feel a need to stand up and speak out on it, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience, please?
Alderman Derek Tebow, Nine Emerson Road in Nashua. So I was on the planning board last year when we voted for this, and it was, in the two years I've been an alderman, it's probably the toughest vote I've had to vote yes on, and I really wanted to vote no. And I felt the reason we voted yes, some of it was there, I mean, it's against the law, right? And the law was put in before this came to us, and there was a mistake made in our planning department, and I felt like after the applicant came to us and said, you know, I thought it was approved, I already put, you know, money into it, and you know, like Ms. Harper said, that we thought we already heard about the casings being done when we heard this last time, I felt like we kind of said, oh, well, they, they kind of bought it, so, and they made a mistake, so we kind of need to let it go, even though it breaks the rules of, there's vapes, vaping stores right there, there's a school literally right there, you know, Main Street's really turning into a vaporama, we don't need the term vaporama on the street, right? So it's, it's, so they, so they bought all the stuff, so we kind of had to let them go, right? It's, you know, I bought an expensive knife, let's go let the person serial kill, right? So, and I know that's not, that's not the illusion, but it's the, or the, the, you know, that I want to make, but it's, it's, just because somebody buys something doesn't mean we have to, to go against what the law currently says right now. And now we have a delay, and I get why, you know, there's got to be some work being done. If it comes back with another delay and another delay, and now we're, we're six months, years down the road, how long does that go if that happens? And again, personally, if it's a delay and delay and delay, great, you know, less vape shops on Main Street, I guess, but I know last time it went through with only one negative vote, I wish mine would have been negative as well. I felt bad about it, but I, you know, and I went home and I felt bad about it, and I know based on law, you're probably going to let this go through, but, you know, I just wanted to put my two cents in, because I did, I did regret that one, it's probably the only one I've really regretted doing over the last two years, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or with concern? Seeing none, I'm going to look to Zoom. Linda, anyone on the call?
There's no one with their hand up.
No one, okay. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this application? No? And once again, no one on Zoom? All right. Attorney Pearlman, feel, please feel free to respond.
Just one quick comment with respect to Alderman Cle. We were made aware, I forget the exact timing when we were made aware, but we were made aware there was, there was a water problem in the basement. What we weren't aware of was the complexity and how much time it would take for the engineers, engineering team to study it, look at it, size it, come up with an engineered plan, and then get it to the city. So yes, we were made aware, but the, the, the challenge was to find a solution that is going to work for the building and that'll work for the city. So yes, we were made aware, but we have some very good extenuating circumstances for the delay, and it's, it's not my client's interest to delay this anymore, and he absolutely has to, he's, he's not making money right now, so he's hoping to open up as soon as possible. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant from the board at this time?
Thank you very much.
Seeing none. Thank you, Attorney Pearlman. All right. I think that concludes, I'm going to close the public hearing on this application. Enter deliberation. I guess my general thoughts on this, irrespective of the use, we've, we've seen a lot of applications for, for extensions without much substantial progress. Here, I think by virtue of the fact that they're hiring an outside engineer to try to address some drainage issues is a substantive showing that they're trying to make progress. So I, I think they're moving in the, in the right direction. I feel better that Mr. Hudson is involved in this review process and has a firm understanding of what the specific issues are that are involved, so my, my general thought, I would be inclined to, to grant this, but obviously I'd like to hear from, from other board members. Please feel free to chime in. Ms. Harper?
Well, you know, I somewhat, I know this is a weird, it's a weird situation, but I, I still somewhat disagree in that, we, you know, when an, an extension comes before us, I feel like one of our first questions is, you know, has anything changed or, and I know technically it hasn't changed, but I, I still feel like we should keep that in mind, that, that there is an ordinance in place not allowing this, this use.
Thank you. Mr. Barley?
Yeah, I mean, just following on that, and I think Alderman Tebow's testimony is well, I, I mean, I, I think it would be reasonable to say that at some point, you know, and we would say this, you know, in the context, I think, of any extension request, you know, if we're on to the second, third, you know, extension request, at some point we'd say, well, there may be underlying changes in, in, you know, circumstances or the ordinance or the facts or what have you that would cause us to say we need to look at this more substantively. But Mr. Chair, I agree with you that in, in the circumstances for us right now, where the testimony from the applicant is, we have a particular issue that we are actively dealing with, and the applicant is very much, you know, you're seeking to, to move as quickly as he can and still very much intends to complete this within a reasonable period of time, you know, in my mind, the, the original basis on which we approved the conditional use permit still stands as valid, might, might be the things.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Barley. Any other board members? Hearing no further comment, is somebody prepared to make a motion on this case? Mr. Barley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would make a motion to approve new business project A-23-0216 conditional use permit, this being a request for a one-year extension for the previously approved conditional use permit, and that would be with a finding that the application does meet the requirements in site plan NRO section 190-133F, with one stipulation, that stipulation being a reference to inclusion of all prior conditions from the original approval.
All right. There's a motion from Mr. Barley. Is there a second?
No second.
Second by Mr. Green. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Ask for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to, oh, I'm sorry, wait for Alderman Cle. My apologies. Moving on in the agenda, next is review of the tentative agenda to determine developments of regional impact. Mr. Barley, yes?
Hi, Mr. Chair. I would make a motion that having reviewed the, the tentative agenda, there are no proposals of regional impact.
And would anyone like to second that?
No second.
Mr. Green? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Motion passes. Under other business, item number two, next item is petition for street discontinuance Marlane. And someone from the public is here to speak on this. If you could just identify yourself, name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
My name's Israel Pietra. I'm an attorney at Wellesley in Fontaine here in Nashua, and I am here representing the petitioner, petitioners Juan Casio and Wendy Dugay, who live at fifteen Quentin Drive in Nashua. 15 Quinton Drive in Nashua. Am I okay to continue into my presentation?
Good to go.
Yes. Please go ahead.
So, I'll, I'll just be brief in my overview here. This is a petition to discontinue a road called Mar Lane, which was originally proposed back in the 60s. So, my client's house is outlined in red on this overview. Mar Lane is labeled on this, but it's very hard to see. It's directly below that.
I'm sorry. If you step away from the podium, could you just grab the microphone just so they can pick up the audio? Thank you.
I'll just angle myself better. So, again, Mar Lane is, is slightly below that red square. We could go to the next slide, please. So, and there's just a zoomed-in view. You can see Mar Lane there in between four different lots. The next slide will show the original subdivision plan that originally proposed Mar Lane, circled in red once we get there. It just shows the original subdivision as proposed. You can see that the reason there was originally a road proposed there is because there was frontage needed for several additional lots. Right now, there's only four lots that abut Mar Lane. At that point, there were nine that were proposed. Going to the next slide, what eventually ended up happening was the developer decided to reduce the number of lots, therefore didn't need the frontage anymore from Mar Lane. A revised plan was submitted to the planning board in the 1970s, which is shown on the next slide there. And what you can see on that exhibit is a couple of things. It says on the display of Mar Lane, it's hard to see on that, obviously, but there's a couple of important notations on the plan. Where Mar Lane is displayed, it reads drain and sewer, drain and sanitary, sanitary sewer easement. And then on the plan notes, it reads, "Mar Lane not to be constructed, but reserved for future sanitary and drain easement." So, as of the 70s, the planning board had approved the subdivision plan stating with a condition that Mar Lane would actually never be built, and that it was just reserved for sanitary and utility easements. So, that being the case, there is some ambiguity about whether we even need to go through the discontinuance process. I think there's a fair argument to be made that the road was never intended to be a road, a public road. But in order to remove any ambiguity, we've decided to go through the discontinuance process after discussing with the city staff. I just want to give a couple, if we could go down, there's a couple of slides down, there's photos of the area, just to give the board an idea of what this looks like on the ground. This is a view of my client's property. And the point of these photos is just to show, Mar Lane, there's a stand of trees in the back of this photograph. Mar Lane runs in the area between that stand of trees and then the underbrush or growth that's on the far side of that, which the next slide will show a little bit better. So, that there is what would be considered Mar Lane, that area in between the stand of trees and, and the, the growth on the, on the right-hand side. So, that's just to show that we do believe the current configuration of Mar Lane essentially places it as part of my client's property, and the other abutting property owners, there's no really distinguishing features. And the purpose of the discontinuance petition is just to return that property to the use of the yard for the, the four abutters that abut that area. As the board may be aware, in a situation like this, the land is already owned by the abutting property owners. So, once the discontinuance is passed, that land will revert to the abutters, to the center line, the former road. We have asked that easements be preserved over the area where Mar Lane was, as was originally intended in the planning board subdivision approval. Just to clarify that, we've talked with all four abutters. They've all indicated no objection to this petition. They've all indicated that they will sign an easement that confirms utility easements for the city to be recorded to clear up any doubt on that. And there would be a new turnaround easement granted in this first section here in this photo to allow city vehicles to turn around in that area because it is a dead-end road, Quinton Drive that, that this photo was taken from, and that was requested by the city. So, we do believe it's a pretty straightforward request. It's a very small area, and was never intended to be built. And so, we think that this will just clear up any confusion, return it to the abutting property owners.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from the board at this time? Alderman Cleve, please.
Again, thank you so much for indulging me. A couple of questions here. So, there are four abutting property owners, and it's going to revert to each of the abutters? So, where their property line goes up to the midpoint of that street or group of land? Yeah?
That is correct. That's what happens just by operation of law. In my client's particular case, he's made an agreement with the, his neighbor, who's actually kind of behind that underbrush or growth to the side, that he will maintain up to that area, essentially, because it is kind of contiguous with his yard. But that's going to, that would be done at, through a separate lot line adjustment after the discontinuance.
Just one other quick question. So, this turnaround area that you, that you mentioned before, that would stop them from being able to put up any kind of fencing in, so, because the city would have to, because that easement will not allow them to have any fence. They could put a natural border, but no fence per se, correct?
Yeah, within that turnaround area. So, the turnaround area is, is limited. It's not the entire length. It's just, you know, 10 feet or whatever into that area. So, certainly within that area, there would, there could be no obstructions.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Ms. Harper?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I just, just so I understand this perfectly, when you say all the abutters, this, this road isn't considered a potential access point to another, like the next lot over for their deed or anything like that? Just?
Yep. Correct. So, this is not an access point for any property. All of the abutters have frontage on either Quinton Drive or Curtis Drive in this, in this neighborhood. And that's what's currently used for emergency access and, and access generally.
Okay.
There's no vehicular traffic at all on this.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions on the board? Mr. Hudson, please.
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to affirm for the board that, that I have reviewed this and recommend approval. Appreciate that they're willing to grant us a turnaround easement. As was stated, it may be that this has already been discontinued. But at any rate, us, the city retaining a drainage and sewer easement and being, providing the accommodation for the turnaround satisfies anything that we envision in the future in this area. So, I, I'm in support of this, and we'll sign the petition, join it with the chair, if the board approves.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Is there any official communication from staff or anyone who needed to address this?
Just, just a referral from Donna Graham, Board of Alderman.
Okay. All right. So, procedurally, you just need to make a motion to?
Recommendation.
Recommendation to the Board of Alderman. That's what we're looking for.
Okay. All right. And?
Mr. Chair, I have one more.
Oh, certainly. Mr. Hudson, please.
Just, just noting that certainly the city's corporate counsel will review the, the language of the proposed easements and such before it's finalized. It's usually part of, part of the board approval, is my understanding. So, I've reviewed the language. I'm not an attorney, but, and take no objection to it, but I further take comfort in the fact that I understand that will be reviewed by professionals that handle that sort of thing.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Any other questions from the board or clarification from staff at this time? Alderman Cleve?
Thank you again. No, I just have more of a, a comment, you know, looking at it through Google Map and so on. It, it looks like it's, in many, in many ways, is going to help the neighbors to be more neighborly. That no one is going to argue about whether or not they can put what where. It's going to create true lines for these. And as long as there's the turnaround for the city and it doesn't encumber anything in the city, I see no reason not to make a recommendation of positive approval to the Board of Alderman.
All right. Thank you, Alderman Cleve. One last chance. Any, any further questions or discussion from the board? All right. In that case, would anyone like to make a motion regarding this petition? Ms. Harper?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a favorable recommendation from the planning board to the Board of Alderman in regards to the petition for a street discontinuance of Mar Lane.
All right. There's a motion from Ms. Harper for a favorable recommendation regarding the aforementioned street discontinuance. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Varley? I'm sorry, I saw him first. Any further discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Motion passes. Or recommendation passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda, establishment of inclusionary zoning ownership standards. Understand we're going to have staff provide some information on this one. It's our old friend, Mr. Sullivan.
Good evening, members of the board. Matt Sullivan, Community Development Director for the city. I'm going to offer a few brief comments this evening. I frankly didn't expect your meeting to go this late, but I know you had some, a busy night before me. But what I'd like to offer before getting into just a brief overview of why I'm here this evening and why these standards are in front of you, I did just want to note that I will return to this body for a more formal presentation in the context of the fact that the regulations actually require that the planning board, while it does have the authority to adopt these standards, should only do so after a legitimate hearing. And I want to say clearly before we get started, just a brief overview, that I'm not intending to treat tonight as that hearing. I'd like to return to you at your next board meeting and ask for formal adoption of these, subsequent to more time for you to consider them, certainly to any questions that you might have this evening, and any questions that you might have of myself or staff as we move forward in implementing these standards. With that, I want to provide just a brief contextual overview of why we're here. Back at the end of 2021, the city adopted a set of new inclusionary zoning standards under ordinance O2173. This was a follow-on activity to the 2020 housing study that was done primarily by the Board of Alderman with the assistance of RKG, the Community Development Division, and of course, the planning board to some extent as well. Also, a follow-up activity to some of the effort of the master plan, and really an overall effort to create more affordable housing across the city of Nashua through an update to standards that already existed, but perhaps were not as functional as they could have been in creating that affordable housing. And so, O2173 was adopted. But what it really does as an ordinance, and in the code itself, it sets the parameters for what requirements or what standards exist across the community, what percentage of affordability is asked for within each development, and where those percentages may vary in different geographic areas. And I'm happy to answer questions about the specifics of that ordinance if a refresher might be in order. What the ordinance did not do is it did not actually codify or get into the detail of how the administration of the inclusionary zoning ordinance or affordability requirements would actually be done. And I'll get into some of those over the course of this evening. But these involve things such as, how is affordability calculated? How is an affordable unit possibly different in quality or size from a market rate unit in a development that this board approves, whether that's in multi-family apartment form or in a single-family dwelling form? How exactly does a developer actually market an affordable unit to the community at large in compliance with the standards so that there's a fair and equitable process? Those things weren't spelled out in O2173. And that was intentional. Part of that was that it was decided when the ordinance was drafted that this board would in fact, because it can be more dynamic in adopting and amending regulations, that this board would ultimately be charged with, as the ordinance refers to it, promulgating a set of regulations that would actually lay out those administrative processes. So, that's why I'm here this evening. We have drafted a set of these standards, as I've referred to them here. They're really a set of regulations that lay out exactly how many of those processes or those specifics might work in the event that an affordable unit is created through an application that comes before this board, again, whether it's part of a multifamily site plan or a traditional subdivision, some of which you've seen already. And so, I wanted to take a moment to just quickly walk through the sections within this. I recognize this is a dense document you received. I'll say that about five pages that are, of it are actually the ordinance that was adopted. So, you don't, you certainly can review that and refresh yourself on that. But there are about five pages of fairly dense content related to the regulations themselves. And they start with this first page that refers to itself as the inclusionary zoning guidelines, ownership housing. I want to start with that to say that there will be two sets of standards coming before this body, one being those relating to owner-occupied units, units that are for sale, which are of their own, have their own challenges and their own complexities when it comes to housing affordability, and those that are for rent, a traditional rental unit that's leased. They necessitate different regulations because in one situation, you're obviously conveying or selling a property, and that affordability moment happens really at, at a few moments in time. Whereas with a rental unit, it needs to be maintained over a long period of time. You have multiple tenants moving in and out. Essentially, the requirements need to be different. So, these standards before you are ownership only. Quickly moving through what we've done here, obviously, we've provided some background within the applicability section and the affordable housing unit requirement. This is obviously based on the inclusionary zoning ordinance. That's a statutory basis for these regulations and these guidelines coming before you. Relative to household income limits, these are actually set by HUD. That's how the ordinance talks about this. And if you don't remember, what we call for in the ordinance is either units that are affordable to 80% of the area median income, and I can come back to you and talk to you about what that means, or 100% of the area median income. Essentially, these are units that are more affordable than what the market currently provides for within the city of Nashua. So, this provides a methodology for how we base that income limit. One of the big questions is how do we determine eligible households? We go into detail here about when an applicant actually comes in and says, I want to buy a home, or, or a developer says, I'm selling a home to a household. How do we determine that that family or that individual actually qualifies for purchasing the unit? We would not qualify for someone, for example, if they make too much money and they're not eligible to actually purchase an affordable unit. So, this actually lays out the methodology for how the eligibility test is done when an affordable homeownership unit or owner-occupied unit is being conveyed to a household. There's a little more detail provided on the second page here where you see some tables. We do need to get into some detail, and this is, I may not review this in much detail even at the subsequent meeting. There are certain limitations that need to be placed on how many individuals can be in certain-sized households. Otherwise, you may end up in a situation where someone is either overqualified or underqualified based on the size of the household and those HUD income limits that I was referring to later. When we come back for a more formal presentation, I'll actually walk you through a few scenarios here to kind of help you see what I'm talking about. Because even as I say it now, it sounds a bit Greek to me. But bottom line, there do need to be rules and requirements relative to the size of the household when it comes to eligibility for an affordable unit. And with that, I, I transitioned to one of the more, the more critical things, and that is, how do we actually determine the affordable sale price? This is a snapshot in time calculation that determines, when a developer's marketing a unit, can they advertise it at $365,000, $425,000, $220,000? There's a calculus that goes into that. And this is the methodology for actually figuring out what that number is and what the unit can be marketed as, subject to an affordability covenant under the ordinance. So, this goes through the details of that. I will just point out that when it comes to calculating affordability, this ordinance and ordinances across the country take into account not only a mortgage payment that someone will be making, but customary fees and other obligations that they might factored in as expenses to ensure that it's actually an affordable unit for them. Moving on to the next page where you'll see a heading of condominium and HOA fees, there are specific, specific details here relative to the limitations on the consideration of HOA fees in the context of affordability. A bit technical here, and I expect that even at our next meeting, I won't go into great detail, but HOA fees or condominium fees do play a critical role in the affordability calculation. Now getting into a few smaller sections, but one of the things we've written in is that the Nashua, the city of Nashua, in the event that a unit is being conveyed, shall have the right of first refusal, refusal to acquire a property if that property is for one reason or another at risk of losing its affordability restriction. I don't expect that this is something that would happen, but it's possible that an affordable unit would be created. Regulations might change, or the affordability term is 99 years and that expires. This basically gives the city, although I don't think this would happen, the right to actually purchase that unit to maintain its affordability or through some other method, maintain affordability at the term, at the end of the term of that affordable requirement. Few specific items, won't get into these, but project phasing, obviously, as a project is built out, there needs to be a proportion of affordable units built. You can't save all of your affordable units to the end of a project. They need to be provided for incrementally over the course. If you have 100-unit development, you can't wait till the end to build all the affordable units. You have to provide them as you go step by step proportionally through that, through that design or build-out. And then a really critical part, and I know that the planning team has got some questions on this on some recent projects, about really the design and size, and how do you ensure that, or what level of expectation is there that an affordable unit will look and feel like a market rate unit? These are actually the standards that spell that out, and I think, I, I think we've struck a good balance between being specific but also being broad. We know that there might need to be changes to some sizes and some standards of quality within affordable units. It's not to say it's substandard quality by any means, but granite countertops are not an obligation, for example, in an affordable unit. There might be some flexibility on finishes that are permitted within affordable units versus market rate units, and some flexibility on the size in order to allow the developer to achieve a more affordable unit than perhaps what the market rate units do in fact a lot for. And then to close, there are a few other provisions related to accessory dwelling units, how the affordability deed restriction will actually function as a recorded device that ensures affordability for long-term. Some notice of the fact that we're suggesting that certain types of potential buyers are given preference, first-time homebuyers being of the highest priority, a level of preference for current Nashua residents who are looking for a home but have not been able to acquire a home for one reason or another. So it's sort of a hierarchy of when a developer's marketing a unit, who are they obligated to sell to first? And we've laid out priority here, and I, I welcome your comments on this as we move forward. Some specific language relative, relative to the market and selection process, and some further definition of what exactly a first-time homebuyer is, because that's actually an area where you can see some abuse, someone claims to be a first-time homebuyer, but in fact, they may have had ownership opportunities in their past. We want to make sure that we're fair and equitable about that, so we lay out some of those standards there. The not-so-fun part, how do we actually enforce this thing? This is going to be an effort between Corporation Council and certainly the Community Development Division, but we need to ensure that the affordable housing agreement is actually respected and that affordable units that are created, whether through the inclusionary zoning ordinance or through some other development agreement device that the city uses, that those requirements are being, those requirements are being followed. I'll just close by saying two things. One, I'll be excited to come back and give sort of a slide-by-slide presentations on some of these things and walk you through some of these calculations that will need to be done. If you haven't gathered this already, these are fairly complex standards, and it's a bit of a new area, certainly for myself and I think for other members of planning staff and community development. We have some in-house expertise, but we are planning to actually seek some professional technical assistance services with administering these affordable units to ensure that these standards are followed and that we're providing regular updates to the methodology based on what the market might do. And so you'll certainly be seeing us back in front of you to represent these moving forward, but we're going to need some support as a city in actually ensuring that affordable units are properly administrated or administered within projects approved by the planning board. Happy to answer any questions that you have. Expect you won't, based on the hour and the amount of information that's in here that you probably want to take some time to review, but I'll be happy to come back to your next meeting and provide a more full presentation on this, but certainly answering any questions you have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. I will offer questions up from the board. Alderman Cleat, please.
Thank you. Director Sullivan, this isn't the first time you've met me, so you know I was going to have questions. I'm going to make them really quick, though, if you don't mind. In here, you just quickly mentioned about the HOA fees. Would, would the person who, and again, I'm going to preface this, with the affordable unit, is that going to be like a HUD-based unit, so that if they turn around and sell their unit, they have to sell it for, in other words, that particular? I remember when we talked about this, it wasn't always going to be the same unit, but now you're talking about that there's a flexibility of design for affordability and so on, so I believe now it has to be the same unit. We, we talked about that there always just had to be a certain percentage that was available there. So I'm assuming that if I buy one of these affordable units, I have to sell it as an affordable unit? It's my first question. And would my HOA fees necessarily be lower than my neighbors? So that's, I guess, kind of my question. And then you said 99 years. I didn't remember there being a 90, I remember there was a provision, but I didn't remember it was 99 years.
Yeah, so a few, a few responses. The first one's a really good question, and that will still come up at our next session, but in an ownership scenario, unlike a multifamily building, because you're conveying an affordable unit, the affordability has to make, has to go with that unit. And, and because it's not, it's not such that you can shift the required affordability throughout development, because all the units are different, and the developer will be responsible for designating which units they feel should be affordable. That affordability tag will go with that unit in perpetuity. Now, I, I could picture a scenario where perhaps someone tries to change that, but it would be, it would be difficult, a difficult modification to make. Relative to the HOA fees, it's a tricky answer, because technically, I can't answer that right now. It's possible that an HOA could introduce a step system for their fees. I expect they won't. I assume equitability will be critical, or equity will be critical in whatever they do. So I expect the HOA fees would be even across all property owners in a condominium situation. But that's not something that will necessarily be involved with. HOA fees matter to us, particularly because it is a factor in the front-end calculation of affordability. That's why we really care about what the way, the HOA structure looks like. But I hope that answers that question. And the last thing, the 99-year provision, this is actually, I, I'm not an attorney, so I can't answer this in great detail, but perpetuity-based property restrictions are not really available in the state of New Hampshire. It's impossible to restrict something in some way in eternity when it comes to that type of restriction. And so what we rely on in many cases is a 99-year property restriction, which is basically the best we can get. And so I expect there'll need to be some sort of refreshers of those 99 years as time goes on, or perhaps we'll have better mechanisms. But at this point in time, we do not have the ability to restrict something beyond 99 years, based on my understanding of common law and litigation related to that issue.
Thank you. I do have another question, but I'm going to wait. It is getting late, and I know all my other members have been working very hard, so I will wait.
Ms. Harper?
I just want, just, just so you know, that next time when you come, I'm, I'm just very curious about, you know, Fair Housing Act, HUD, and all of those governances along with our program. I'm going to be really curious just about how those, all of those things work together.
Yeah, and, and I'll be ready for that. I would just say, no, no, it's a, it's a really good question. So that you'll, what you'll see is that many of the quality standards and the requirements that you sort of proportionally provide units are intended to address exactly what you're talking about, so that you avoid a situation where all of the affordable units are together in a development, or they're all exactly the same while all the other units are differentiated, or they're all built at one time, or the HOA fees are different. The goal here is actually to create a level of equity, so that we're in accordance with fair housing standards. So while there may be some differentiation of affordable units from their, it should not be immediately noticeable to the eye, it should be something that someone has to search for, and that's really an intent to directly address fair housing concerns that we've at least heard about in other communities where they do clearly separate the two, and that can create some major issues. The goal is that when somebody buys in one of these developments, that they don't feel like a lesser owner than anyone else, whether that's in a condominium situation or in a subdivision, the intent is for these standards to avoid that, but to also give the developer some level of flexibility, not to cut corners, but to adjust some of the design in order to allow for the financial feasibility of the creation of an affordable unit in accordance with these standards. And that's a tricky needle to thread, but we're hoping that this is a good step towards doing that. I want to just mention one other thing I probably should have started with. The idea is to, well, this is an independent document that dovetail with the work that Sam and the planning team are working on relative to land use code update. They're going to be working on an update to the inclusionary zoning ordinance that may produce some level of adjustment to some of what's in here. That said, I actually don't think that a lot of this will change, assuming that owner-occupied affordable units continue to be something that that ordinance deals with. If it, that doesn't happen to be the case, I still think this is good work done by the board, because affordable housing requirements are not going away. And so I think this is really good conversation to have with you just generally about fair housing, affordable housing plot, how it plays a role in the developments that you're looking at.
Thank you.
Other members of the board? Yep? Not at this time?
Mr. Sullivan, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Look forward to hearing more down the road here.
Thank you.
All right. Looks like that was the last item on the agenda. It's been a little longer probably than we thought it would be tonight, but if anybody would be willing to make a motion to adjourn, I think we're, Ms. Harper?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right. Second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Green? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, everybody. Meeting closes at 9:43 PM.
Is there something called the rule against perpetuities?